Thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the room?
Adamson, here.
Bray.
Here.
Cheetham.
Here.
Lurick.
Um.
Ortega.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Black.
Here. You forget who you were?
No, I was taking it. And then she skipped me.
Okay, thank you very much. If you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which if you remain standing for an invocation, which will be by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forward to standards, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number three as a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires any matter of this, it can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes of June 18, 2020 executive session. B, payroll and material claims. Council may wish to consider payroll and material claims for the month of June 2020. Good evening, Ashley.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Ashley Walsh, Chief Financial Officer. Tonight, I am presenting the payroll and material claims report for June 2020. Total payroll and material claims for the month were $7,697,706, of which payroll-related claims were $3,797,488. We had changes in filled positions of an increase of three full-time, a decrease of two half-time, a decrease of four part-time, and an increase of 51 seasonal employees, for an overall increase of 48 positions for the month of June. Vendor claims totaled $3,812,218, and some of the large vendor claims for the month were $1,015,357 to DePacto Inc. for airport construction, $616,804 to Oshkosh Truck Corporation for airport construction. CP integrity construction, we paid $123,986 for CDBG projects. Napa Auto Parts, $119,918 for fleet operating cost and parts for February through May. The rest of the large vendor claims explain 91% of all of the vendor claims for the month of June. And on the back of the report, we've given you information on our June purchase card activity. We had 1,172 transactions for a total of $259,476, and 134 cardholders had transactions for the month. We also had three purchase agents with monthly totals greater than $10,000, and the types of expenditures are listed for your review. This completes my report. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
Ashley, what, the, right under the blue section on the front page?
Uh huh.
Anderson, Julian, and Hall. It says fire and ambulance attorney fees. What is that?
My guess is it would be potentially for arbitration costs.
Anderson, Julian, and Hall is the firm that represents us in our union negotiations in the arbitration. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
So with negotiations the way they were this year, what is this bill for?
Yeah, presumably there was an arbitration earlier this year.
Oh, it's for the arbitration. We have not negotiation.
Not negotiation, but arbitration. I mean, basically, that firm represents the city as to both unions, and union negotiation as well as union matters. And there was some arbitration matters with the fire department this year.
Okay.
And I'm presumably what I, my answer would be off the top of my head, that's what that's for, is for the arbitration that occurred earlier this year.
And it should be on that report that I sent out to you. It should, there should be a better description.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Ashley? Okay, thank you. C, Historic Preservation Commission appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Marty Vescara to serve as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, replacing Megan Sully, whose term expired. Mr. Vescara's term will begin July 11, 2020, and will expire July 11, 2023. D, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Fred Belzer to continue his service as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Mr. Belzer's term will begin July 8, 2020, and will expire July 8, 2022. C, Council decision, Hammes subdivision, Division 2 short plat approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the short plat for Hammes subdivision, Division 2, which subdivides approximately 2.71 acres of lot 2, Block 1, Hammes subdivision, into three residential lots, subject to conditions. The property is located at 3790 Johnny Creek Road. F, Council decision, Reed subdivision final plat approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the final plat for Reed subdivision, which subdivides approximately 1.95 acres of land into 15 townhomes lots, three of which are already developed, with two townhomes subject to conditions. The property is located in the 1200 block of Hebrew Avenue. G, Council decision, rezone of lots 11 and 12, Block 353, Pocatello Town Site, from light industrial LI to residential, commercial, professional RCP. Council may wish to adopt this decision to approve the request from ECS. Properties LLC for the amount of, for the amendment of the zoning designation of lots 11 and 12 blocks, 353 Pocatello Town Site, from light industrial LI to residential, commercial, professional.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, we've got Councilwoman Stevens.
I request that we consider items C and D separately.
So...
Do you make a motion?
Is that a motion?
No, I make a motion. I thought I just had...
Oh, just request that's all it is? Okay. All right. So C and D. All righty. Yes.
Well, I was going to make a different motion, but, uh, so I move that we approve the consent agenda items. What is it? A, B, E, F, G.
So the motion is to approve A, B, E, F, G. Is that correct?
Yes. Dr. Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheetham. Connie, could you please call the room?
Lurick.
Yes.
Cheetham.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Ortega.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Adamson.
I move that we approve items D and E.
Second.
You mean C and D.
Oh, yes. I'm so sorry.
C and D.
I started to scroll.
Are you still good with that?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion by Council President Adamson and a second by Cheetham. Connie, could you please call the room?
Adamson.
Yes.
Cheetham.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Ortega?
No.
Stevens?
Regretfully no. Looking forward to the day when we can have a considered conversation.
Thank you. Agenda item four, communication and proclamations. We have no proclamations, and so we'll move to agenda item five as a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On June, or July 9, at 9:00 AM will be a city council work session. On July 16, at 5:30 PM will be a regular city council clarification meeting. On July 16, at 6:00 PM will be a regular city council meeting. Other events, city offices will be closed Friday, July 3, to observe the, in observance of the Independence Day holiday. Garage garbage and recycling services will operate as scheduled. As a reminder, there is an open burn ban in wildland urban interface areas is in place through October 1. As a, another reminder, please remember with the Fourth of July weekend coming up to do not light fireworks in the benches and up in the bench areas to prevent any kind of fires that may occur. And then as a reminder also, Governor Little's COVID-19 guidelines for opening up Idaho are still in place at all city offices. Okay, agenda item six, open container waiver request, Old Town Pocatello. Council may wish to consider a request from Old Town Pocatello for a waiver of the open container ordinance to allow alcohol to be consumed on city sidewalks and permitted parklets, or parklet areas throughout the Old Town Business Improvement District daily until 11:00 PM, beginning immediately through Saturday, October 31, 2020. If the open container ordinance is waived, it should be continued upon the applicant meeting police department requirements. Councilwoman Ortega?
I move that we approve agenda item number six with the stipulation that all the conditions set by staff be met. Second.
Can I ask? Absolutely.
Stephanie, may I ask you a question? One of the things that we did when we, we started Revival 5 was that we asked for there to be some monitoring to go on. Is there anything in place for monitoring? I didn't see it in our recommendations. I know that's part of the concern about what happens. Is there any regard for monitoring going?
Bars and restaurants have their security staff in place. They'll be watching for over-serving inside so that those folks don't go outside without calling hand.
Stephanie, can I get you to identify for the audience who you are?
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Thank you.
Stephanie Pelagi, Old Town Pocatello, 420 North Main Street. So private security, we hire private security when we do large events. I don't plan on hiring private security for day-to-day activities.
But it has been discussed with the proprietors.
Yes. Yep.
Mr. Mayor? Yes.
You know, with the struggle that our restaurants and bars have had the last three months, I think we need to bend a little. I understand it could be a problem for the police department, but I'm willing to take that chance. I, I think we need to give a little here to help them out and help them get their finances back in order.
So this is...
So you want what? No, no conditions? You just...
I think the proposal that was brought to us by Old Town is well thought out, has been talked to by the restaurants and bar owners in my conversation with Stephanie. I think they're willing to do what they can to keep this in place. I just, I'm just concerned that we're creating something that isn't going to work for Old Town. It's not going to help our bars and restaurants in Old Town.
I know.
Do you...
And I feel like, well, I mean, I, I, I want to support the bars and the restaurants. I really do, and they've been hit probably the hardest throughout all of this, so, but I also want to help our police do its job without, so I...
I know there's a concern, great concern, over the wandering back and forth and stuff like that, and so I think, I think these conditions aren't overwhelming, but yeah.
Yeah, that was what I was going to say, is I read through those, I don't, I don't feel that they're anything that seems too terrible, and so I just wanted to ask Stephanie, have you seen what these conditions are? No, I've had verbal discussions, but I did not get them in writing.
Okay. And these, and this, like, the right-of-way use agreement and all that, are there fees to the business for this?
There is currently in our application. It's a $75 fee.
That kind of changes my...
Do we have the capacity to waive those?
You, as the councilman, could do whatever you want, please.
So we've got our attorney that wants to say something.
And I may throw in, um, at this point, not to interject too much, but the council has a motion in front with the condition. Two things I'd like to point out. One is I would ask that the conditions for the motion be read into the record so everyone knows. Second of all, from a staff level, I've been involved with Carl and with Merrill, or, yeah, Merrill. I haven't spoken with Ms. Pelagi, but I have spoken with Captain Kelly. What you have here is, and I think it's, I have what the council wants to help local business, whether it's the bars or whatever the stores are, and this is the way to do that. But what, what we're doing here is there is a certain amount of liability on the city because we have the right-of-way. That's why you need the right-of-way use agreement. The analogy I would draw is this council previously has done something very similar for Penny Pink and the October group fest. The distinction between that event and this is both geographic and duration, scope in time, scope in space. What this does, from my perspective, with the conditions laid out, addresses the two issues that I see paramount. One is try to up local business. The other part is address the potential liability for the city. The way this would work is they would get a right-of-way use agreement with conditions as laid out in here, and the city would have an enforcement perspective on this. Also, this has to be cleared by the state. In essence, what, what's happening now is I use, I like grapefruit, so I'm going to use the Gresham key. They can serve out long food in their current establishment. That's the footprint, their license promise. What this would do with these conditions, help them expand their footprint out to and into the sidewalk or perhaps a park. Since we're into the sidewalk and the park, the street, which is owned by the city, we face potential liability there. Therefore, how do we protect our interest? Well, we, why don't we do a right-of-way use agreement with them requiring some insurance? Yes, they have to put some skin in the game, and I understand that. But at the same time, we're protecting the city, the taxpayers of the city, and hopefully promoting the business as well. That's why I think these conditions as to motion. And yes, there is a fee, there's administrative fee, and unfortunately, that's the reality of running government. And, and as Merrill said, the council, if so true that's going to waive those, I would revise against it, but you can do what you want. I'm just going to recommend from the legal standpoint of balancing the interest of private business, balancing the potential liability to the city, what you have before you, I think, is the best way to go. Yes, ma'am.
Does waiving the fees in any way impact our liability?
No, it does not. But what you're looking at is just for your, is staff time and effort? Yes. It doesn't, no, it doesn't impact our liability because they're going to require security insurance. And, and then one, the last step of this is we go through the process, and in essence, they're being, it's not being rubber stamped by Idaho State Police Alcohol Beverage Control or ABC, but they're, they, from what I understand, they're taking a more lax approach on allowing the expansion of the footprint, which is where they, because otherwise, if they're selling alcohol not within their footprint, then they're in trouble, they could, their liquor license may get punched. So, anything else? I'm happy to help.
Are you telling me that I need to read these as part of my motion?
I would suggest that you do, just for the purposes of the right.
Whatever, whatever, hold your boat. So... Mayor, wasn't the state also asking that these, some of these things be in place before they would expand their footprint as well?
So the state, before the state would, would act, and then you can speak to this, I think, but before the state would act, we needed to go through this step so that there was a process for them to get the permission from the city before the state would consider. Is that...
To start expanding.
To allow the alcohol to be consumed on the public right-of-way.
Correct.
Just a clarification there.
Well, the state needs to expand the footprint, and so before they were to consider expanding the footprint, we have to go through this process.
Then procedural question. And I realize there's a motion on the floor. If I, would I just make a separate motion relative to fees?
Would you make a separate motion? Can we entertain this motion and then entertain a second motion on it? Or does he need a substitute motion?
Should I withdraw the initial motion and just make a...
Well, if she makes, if she makes a different motion, her motion would be voted on first, and if it passes, then your motion just goes away.
Her motion would be an intervening motion, which would be, intervening is proceeding to her motion, and then you take that up first, and then if that were to pass, your motion would just die.
Yeah.
Well, she was just adding a second.
Well, no, we have a second. Yes, I, I heard, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to comment, I'm really uncomfortable with waiving the fee, and I totally understand the intent, but we have people come and ask, well, we used to have people come and ask us to waive fees all the time, and so when you start getting into, well, I'm going to do it for this person, but not for that person, and it starts getting really iffy, in my opinion, when you're picking and choosing who pays the fees and who doesn't. Also, just through our budget meetings, we just went through a whole thing where we were asking staff to please make sure their fees were covering for their time and administrative costs in doing that, so I just would really caution us against getting into a waiver of fees. I would not pay for that.
Right now, the motion does not address that.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, I think we should, we should keep it.
If we have a substitute motion, then may it...
Is that $75 the new fee or the old?
It is the old fee. That new fee doesn't go into effect till October.
Okay.
It voted on.
Okay. Thank you.
It passes.
So I have one question and another question. So effectively, if we pass this, we're allowing them to gain a greater capacity, aren't we?
To make up for...
So for $75 for three or four months, they will not have a 50% capacity just based on inside. They can go beyond it.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. I have not seen any, oh, we want to read that. Yes, I'm sorry, I, yeah.
So the conditions are, should the council wish to approve the request, staff recommends the following conditions. One, an approved and executed right-of-way use agreement with the city granted to a specific business with a defined footprint. Two, subject to the standards of the State of Idaho Alcohol Beverage Control Bureau. Three, perimeter shall be clearly established. Four, patrons consuming alcohol need to be seated at the table. Five, establishments that do not possess a state-issued restaurant endorsement need to have the outside parameter, parameter? Parameter posted with 21 and older signs. And number six, all other applicable standards of Pocatello Municipal Code shall apply.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Motion by Ortega.
Does that, does that adequately address all of the police department requirements? Or do we need to add that? Is it...
Yes. I, I think so. I think if that, if the intent of that is that the alcohol's to be consumed at that particular location. Well, that's, that's basically, in essence, then again, you get back into, it's not a blanket request for a big zone. It's basically tied specifically to the footprint of the premise, which this way, if they go through this procedure, that, the premise definition, footprint is expanded to include a portion of the city's right-of-way. So yes, it's not going to be, you're not going to be permitted to walk down the middle of Manette's Main Street with a beer in your hand. No, that's still illegal.
So, so does the motion as framed restrict this to the Old Town area, or can any restaurant or bar in the city do this?
My understanding is it is for the BID.
This is for the BID.
It's for the Old Town area only.
Business Improvement District.
Business, yeah. Business Improvement.
And I, and looking at the footprint of the diagram, it does exclude other bars and restaurants within the confines of the city Pocatello.
So the BID does not cover everybody in the downtown area. There are some that are just outside of it, and they would be excluded from that if they were to...
They could come and apply. I was going to say, but nothing stops them from applying.
Nothing stops them from doing that, but I believe that Stephanie's asking or making the request on behalf of the BID, that's the people that pay her wages, so.
Can I clarify that?
Please.
I am, because our, in the past, when I pull open container waivers, my insurance is provided and is on file with the city of Pocatello. I can't take the liability to insure businesses outside of our area.
Yeah.
But they could come and ask and do what they want to do separately.
If they want to come and ask, then they could ask.
Okay.
Okay. So now we have a very clear...
Did we vote already?
No, not yet. That's how clear it's been.
I'm like, do we even...
We have a clear motion by Ortega and a second by Stevens. Connie, could you please call the room?
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. We will move to agenda item seven, WPC Maintenance Shop Roof Replacement Project. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following request regarding the WPC Maintenance Shop Roof Replacement. A, accept the lowest responsive bid received on June 16, 2020, from Thomas D. Robinson Roofing Incorporated in the amount of $59,500 for a total bid, and if the bid is accepted, B, authorize the mayor's execution of the agreement between the city of Pocatello and Thomas D. Robinson Roofing Incorporated in the amount of $59,500 for the WPC Maintenance Shop Roof Replacement, subject to legal department review. The project includes covering the existing roof with a thermoplastic membrane and anchoring the membrane to the existing structure. If approved, the work will begin July, in July, and will be completed within 30 days. Funds for the project are budgeted within and available in the WPC capital account. Council move Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the WPC Maintenance Shop Roof Replacement by accepting the lowest responsive bid and authorizing you to execute the agreement between the city of Pocatello and Thomas D. Robinson Roofing.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheetham. Connie, could you please call the room?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, renewal of lease agreement with Senior Activity Center Incorporated. Council may wish to consider approving a lease agreement with the Senior Activity Incorporated, senior activity center incorporated for lease of city property located at 427 North Sixth Avenue. The proposed lease agreement represents a renewal of a current 10-year agreement, which expired on June 30, 2020, with the following revisions. A, change the name from Greater Pocatello Senior Citizens Incorporated to the Senior Activity Center Incorporated. B, update the lease agreement reflecting current utility processes protocols in place since FYE 2018, whereby Senior Activity Center Incorporated receives billings and processes payment for, for all the center utilities with support from the city in the amount of $35,000 yearly for the purpose of utility payments. And C, renew of a 10-year agreement term with, with a condition following, allowing for the reduction in term length, should be, should the Senior Activity Center Incorporated relocate to a new alternative facility.
Okay, question for Rich.
Okay, Rich.
This outline here does not state that we also are saying that if we do not appropriate, then this is null and void.
No, and the agenda item does not specify that there's a non-appropriation clause within the contract. There is a non-appropriation clause in the contract containing materials. And the nuts and bolts of that is, as I was explaining, is that, say, this year, year one, you have a 10-year term. Year one, you appropriate the money for that, and you pay it. Year two, the council decides not to appropriate the money, i.e. to allocate the money and budget it, then we, the city, can walk away from that agreement without being a breach.
So, so this is fine even though it doesn't go to the detail?
Correct, yes. No, no, the agenda item clarifies, but it is not, in my experience, we've had mention in the agenda items having a non-appropriation clause in the past, and we also have not. But this is, at the end of the day, if you authorize the mayor to sign this agreement, it's a 10-year term, $35,000 a year with a non-appropriation clause, and if you don't want to pay year two or year three, you don't have to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move for approval of agenda item number eight, renewal of the lease agreement with the Senior Activity Center Incorporated, authorizing your signature to execute it upon legal department approval.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Cheetham and a second by Lurick. Any discussion?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm opposed for a number of reasons. One of them is, according to their financial information, their utilities are only $23,000. But we're, so that's $12,000 more, it's been less than what we're, what they're asking for. And number two, I'd like to know how many people, like actual human bodies, go there on a monthly basis? You know, because you can tell me that you do Zumba and Tai Chi and all that fun stuff, but is it, are those things attended by two people or 122 people? So I, I'm, I'd like to know why we're giving them $35,000 for utilities when their utilities are $23,000.
Mr. Mayor, we have representatives of the senior center here, the president, secretary is here, if you'd like to hear from them.
Please.
I'm Rudy Navaskar, I'm the chair of the advisory board for the center, and just
Please.
I'm Ernie Navaskam, the chair of the advisory board for the center. And just for general information, over the last year, we provided for that $35,000, more than 30,000 person hours of recreation in the facility. So, you know, that's a, that's a pretty good investment, as the recreation director would know, that for that amount of money, to get that many hours of recreational activities for senior citizens in this, in this community. So, in terms of exactly how many people go through the building every day, I don't have that right up my fingertips, but we serve typically, well, right now, we're serving 170 meals a day to senior citizens on a takeout basis. And during the times when people can actually come into the building, I'm not exactly sure how many meals we're serving, but it's not quite that many. But it's pretty close to that every day.
So, I have a question. Why couldn't you partner with Meals on Wheels and have Meals on Wheels deliver the meals to the senior center and you give them out? Because it seems like you're doing the same thing Meals on Wheels is doing.
No, we're not. And I can't really address that. I know that Nita had looked at that as a possibility when the COVID-19 thing happened, and they could not do that. We, they could not give us the meals to distribute there. And so, we are providing, we're actually buying the food and providing the meals. And like I say, on the average, about 165 meals a day, four days a week, so.
So, Meals on Wheels, there's laws and we know that?
Yeah, they have separate requirements in how they can provide food to people, and they can't provide it to us and then have us provide it to somebody else.
And I think, my name's Marjorie Walker, and I'm the secretary.
Walk up to the mic, Marjorie.
And I think that CCOG is a better person to.
CCA.
Well, it's, this is CCOG.
I was going to say Meals on Wheels is CCA, sorry.
Okay, and that might go through that. But CCOG helps to provide, one of the requirements at senior centers is that we provide a nutrition program for the seniors. That's one of our big, big issues. Meals on Wheels, I believe, is more for people that are, cannot leave their homes, and their meals are delivered to them, they're more invalid. The people that come to the senior center for nutrition can leave their homes. They may not drive their own car, but they have access to city transportation, and they come to the senior center for a nutritious meal.
That is the difference. The CCA Meals on Wheels is shut-ins. So, they're delivering to people that cannot leave their homes.
So, they're, they have a different, they serve a different population of people.
I'm under the impression from a conversation with someone intimately involved with the senior center that there have, for a lot of obvious reasons, there's been a rise in the number of curbside meals, but there was also a concern that there was no senior status checking, perhaps at the beginning, so that there were, some of those meals were potentially being delivered to non-seniors. Could you just clarify how you ensure that, that it's not, you know, I'm not driving the car, and there are four 45-year-olds in the car with me?
Yeah, and, you know, to tell you the truth, I cannot answer that. Do you know?
I can't either accept that. I do know, from my understanding, is that they do check people if they're not signed up and registered as a member to make sure that they're legitimate. So, I believe that that's adequately covered.
And I know that when we started the curbside service, Nita, people were registering as members of the senior center because it was a way for them to get that meal, and I think our membership increased due to that. And one of the notes she gave to us was that they counted the veterans, so somehow they're checking. I have not gone down myself simply because I have a compromised immune system and I'm staying away from that kind of activity. But I know they are checking somehow. They wouldn't know who the veterans were.
I think you have various funding sources, and some of this is triggering some of my memories. I think that you have funding sources that you have to account for. I think Andy Guerrero does account.
He does, yes.
On a weekly basis of all that have used the facility, particularly the meals, because you get reimbursed a portion of those meals. And I think that the other part with the Meals on Wheels, there's a different accounting principle that goes there, and the two don't cross-pollinate. Years ago, the senior center actually provided Meals on Wheels.
They did, yes.
But when you are cooking the meals, that's different than bringing them in. So, if you cook the meal and then you outsource some of them to Meals on Wheels, that's a different avenue. So, just a few things here.
And, you know, your question about how many people actually use the facility, there's different activities going on and on different days. And I know, for example, pinochle, they had pinochle going on maybe a couple days a week, and there's going to be maybe 16 to 24 people in an activity like that. Sometimes pinochle seems to be pretty popular. Bingo is really popular. A lot of people stay after the meal and play bingo or come before to play bingo. There's tai chi. Tai chi probably has, I've seen a number of people in there during that class. There could be 15 to 20 people in that kind of a class. Some of the classes, like I know some of the dancing hasn't been real filled out because I, and I think part of that issue stems from the fact that New Knowledge Adventures provides that kind of activity for the seniors, so.
So, for those classes, though, because the community rec center has, has limited the class sizes, right, John?
Right, yeah.
Was eight, now it's how many, 12?
It depends on space, between 12 and 15.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the recreation facilities have opened back up and are providing that, but like New Knowledge Adventures isn't even going right now. They're, they're not even involved. Pool, I know Ernie goes down.
That was my thing, pocket billiards.
Billiards, but there's a number of people, and they, different people come on different days and at different times to play pool. That's another real popular activity.
Do you have any kind of long-range plan?
Well, formalized, written, current? We do have those, those things right here, right now, with our mission being that we need to provide those nutritional programs and socialization and other activities for seniors in our community. You're aware that there, Rick has been the chair of the ad hoc committee. There's been a group called United Seniors Project that has been working for several years, trying to figure out how we can coordinate all the senior activities that are going on in our community and to try to find a facility or somewhere where all of them could be together. That includes New Knowledge Adventures, the senior center. We would like to see senior games that they have been in and out of that. Oh, yeah, the senior band that's going, if we could have a facility where all of them could be together, I think we would see much more activity. New Knowledge Adventures is, works through the Workforce Training Community Continuing Education Program at ISU, and we have, that program has typically 500 to 600 members every semester.
Is there an ETA for, for coming up with a plan?
We have, we've been really looking at that and trying to figure out where to find a building, how to find a building, how are we going to fund it? We were talking, I have served on about every committee. So, you know, we had a fundraiser scheduled for the first of May, but that got canceled. And we're trying to figure out how we can get at least an even down payment money for a facility. And we've had all kinds of ideas that are still floating around, but now fundraising is at a standstill because of COVID. And what can we do? How can we do it?
So, full disclosure, you know, I'm going to be pressing for, not just from the senior center, but certainly this time next year, I'm going to be pressing for performance-based outcome results, you know, value for dollar, all of that sort of thing. And I just want to be clear, because I'm not trying to catch anybody unawares.
We understand, and we desire to do that. And, you know, I can just assure you, I, ever since I was appointed as the chair, I've spent many days, all day long, at the center. And so, and almost all of the rooms are full of people doing things. So, I can assure you that the facilities are used to their capacity. And that has been really, really been obvious to me, and so, we're willing to do, you know, that kind of evaluation.
Another really popular activity on the Friday and Saturday night dances, and that's one of the ways that we earn money. Well, we haven't been doing that since February, so it's, we're kind of stuck. We had a, we have a big car show. In fact, we've coordinated with Old Town the last couple of years, and that's been very successful. We couldn't do it because it's usually in June. We had to cancel our golf tournament. That's another avenue for us to try to get funds. And our general manager, Anita Valadola, has been writing grants like crazy during this whole thing, trying to pull in more funds to keep us afloat, because we can't fundraise right now, so.
Rick, you had something you wanted to?
I just wanted to say that, you know, the senior ad hoc committee has been working on a business plan with Small Business Development Center, and that has been stifled by COVID also. We've had a tough time because of the age of the population we're dealing with here. We're a little more susceptible, those of us who are in that generation. And that has really stifled that work. We had that, a plan for that, we got a presentation by Ence Watson two months ago. Last month's meeting was canceled because of lack of a quorum. Hopefully, in two weeks, we'll have another meeting, and we'll have a quorum, and we can proceed. And I am hoping by the first of the year, we'll have a business plan put together and be ready to actually do something.
Thank you for that.
I'm going to make one last comment, too. As, after becoming a senior citizen and getting involved in the center, it seems to me that it's one of the very few places in southeast Idaho where seniors can go and recreate, you know? And that's our, that's a big part of our goal, in addition to socialization, which is really precious, all the seniors and students, and food service and nutrition. So, you know, to me, it would be a real shame if we couldn't provide what we're doing now for the seniors.
Okay. Oh, do you have another?
Well, I was just wondering, because for all the obvious reasons, you know, you're, not only your fundraising activities have been curtailed, but also your other activities. And so, I'm just curious, what costs may or may not be associated with those other canceled activities and whether or not that is going to impact your overall need for income on an annual basis? And I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I'm not sure any of us knows the answer to that right now.
I mean, results down the road.
I mean, are, so, for example, well, you are cooking, so that's not going to, that's going to maintain. What does the, your utilities came in at something like 20?
23,000.
23,000. Where does the additional 12,000, how is that applied?
It can go for other, it can go for other things, like supporting the recreational activities that we do do, so.
Right, and so that's what I'm asking, what costs?
Bingo costs and karaoke.
Equipment, music. All of those activities have costs. And so, that leads me back to my question about the fact that you haven't been able to do those for, let's say, March, April, May, June, probably not July. August is iffy. I'm just wondering whether or not that, that additional $12,000 that is not for meals
is as, is necessary, because you are not doing the activities as much, at least of the activities that have those additional costs associated with them.
And that may be true. I think we're just going to have to see. But now, we're not doing any fundraising, so now we're going to be, we've lost, I know, I think we, we made about 8,000 on the car show and close to 10 on the golf tournament last year, so $18,000 will be.
That you lose.
Right, I was upfront, I know that.
Okay.
And the dances, of course, haven't been going. And, you know, like when we do have dances, you're right, we have to buy supplies, because they eat, they have a little buffet thing, and so, all of those things are included. So, we bring in money, but then we output money also. And you're right, we're not buying any of that right now.
But you're also right, that you don't have your traditional fundraising.
Right.
And so, that cuts your revenue.
Now, I do know the lights have been on, and we've been using power and electricity and.
Well, and you're cooking.
And, yeah, and we've had staff on board that we're paying, and we've had volunteers as well.
And we're trying to call people, stay in touch. Anyway.
Okay, super. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion on the floor, a motion from Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Shawnee, would you, or Shawnee, Connie, would you please call it over?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes, but with the understanding that we have a non.
There's a nonappropriation clause in the agreement, yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for attending with us tonight. We appreciate you being here.